Jesus, please don't. Please, Sharon.
I have a question before we begin.
Now, so talk.
Notice this motion. Do I read it out?
Do you really get the motion? Not to read the motion. You do the motion first.
Yes, and then do I read the preamble?
Get a second then, then you go to the preamble word for word or in your own words, which they are.
Yes.
What do you just say?
Unless you hold yours physically down. To mute, you have to, and continue to hold.
Just because we're not controlling, it's just want to go. So that means we proceed there.
No, don't see. Don't see. And you'll be right. Don't touch your face. I'm just gonna give the signal, John, that's one minute to. So, everyone, we're going.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillors. Can we get the three to... Jimmy?
No, don't stop talking.
Haven't you listened to the twelve minutes?
No.
It's got action.
Haven't got an notification of the life yet.
Seventy seconds alone. We're on our way.
It's starting crashing for mine, too.
I don't want to laugh.
Yes.
I turn.
Ah, is that what it is, the big?
At least then, councillors. Firstly, I'd like to welcome councillors and members of the public who may be watching for this auspicious occasion, which is the first live streaming of a council meeting for the Swan Hill Rural City Council. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders, past and present. Councillor Bennet, the prayer, please.
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you, councillors, please be seated. I'm going to call for apologies, which we don't have any of.
No apologies, we have all the councillors present, Mr. Bennet.
Against the CEO. Confirmation of minutes. Minutes have been circulated. Are there any objections to the minutes? Has that been circulated?
I know you've already accepted, Mr. Bennet.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee is seconded. Councillor MacKay will favor. Thank you. Declared unanimously. Declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations of conflict of interest? We have none. Receptions of readings, petitions, memorials, joint letters and debutsions, Mr. CEO.
No, Mr. Bennet, there are none.
There are none. Thank you. Public question time. Are there any questions from the public that need to be addressed?
No, Mr. Bennet, a slightly different process, given that we are closed to the public gallery that is streaming online. We have required questions being emailed to us by both the business yesterday, and there have been none recently.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. We move on to section B, reports. Item B, twenty point one, follow, municipal early middle years plan.
Thank you, Mayor, councillors. Lots of firsts today in this meeting, and one of these is this report provides council with its first ever, what we would have called our municipal early years plan, but it's actually our municipal early and middle years plan. This is a ten year plan that council listed as one of its priorities for the current council plan to be worked on. And over the past twelve days and months, council engaged the services of local workplace and used the reference group of people from different agencies to develop this plan together. So it's the first time, hopefully, we have an adopted plan of this type of scope, and we expanded the scope to what is normally an early years plan to middle years because of the gap that is perceived between early years and youth. So hence the zero to twelve. And also the ten years scope of the plan, is to actually understand that, or recognize that, change that happens in development of children and also for infrastructure involved means we've got time to actually develop that, seek funding and make changes. So there's a series of outcomes that are listed in the report. Obviously, getting better outcomes for children aged zero to twelve. Clearer defining of council's role, and also what investment in early and middle years services. But also ensuring that current future needs and demands early years services, such as workforce and infrastructure across the communities are identified and planned on. And that's why those became the three themes: infrastructure, relevant flexible services and workforce. It's a very detailed plan, but it's also a plan that's not seen to be council centric. It's a plan that can be used by multiple agencies across the community and also government departments to support change and to get better outcomes for children. The consultation is something we're very, very proud of. Over 1,200 local people were heard from, including 748 children and young people, which was a process that took place right up until about February this year. And council, two meetings ago, February maybe, whatever it was, also put this draft report out for any comments from the community. We only received one comment back, and it was a favorable comment requiring a change. So I'm not presenting a revised version from what was provided last time. So basically, presenting this report with the intent that council adopt the Swan Hill Rural City Council's first ever municipal early middle years plan, twenty twenty to twenty twenty nine, actually, is as presented.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah. And just first, Mr. Myers, you said in glossary, on page, well, not one, but generally page two of the report, we've got stretching from Rommel to North to Swan Hill Township in the South. I believe we have a top line of townships further south than Swan Hill, in a municipality.
For you, Mayor, to councillor McPhee, that is correct. I think the assumption is we include Lake Yover and Tresco into that. The assumption is the old municipalities go along this way.
But I'm just saying, in that glossary, you're saying from Rommel to North to Swan Hill in the South, to Swan Hill Township. That's what I'm saying, there should be Lake Yover and Tresco rather than Swan Hill. And just in relation to, at the other end of the scale, relates to this question, Mr. Myers, if you don't mind, age care, we're reducing the cost to age care through our budgeting process at the moment because of different ideas. Yet our budget for youth services has gone up thirty-three percent from 2016 to 2021. Why are we increasing the budget there when ideally we should not be the prime reason for looking after children and education and helping around to schools, the education department and the health department?
Yeah, through you, Mayor, councillor McPhee. This report is focused on early years to middle years up to the youth program. And as irony would have it, there will be further presentations in the coming month on the new youth strategy, which addresses those sorts of things. So I won't go into detail, and I can certainly take that on notice as a broader question through that report when it comes through councillor McPhee. But council has also been quite successful in gaining external grants for our youth program, and some of that requires matching funding as well. And the youth program responds to the youth strategy adopted by council as well. So more than happy to be bringing that back through council assemblies and to possibly debate or issue the council other section of the option.
And just one final question. The other school hours and your immunizations, council look after Swan Hill, we look after Rommel. So we're not doing the whole municipality anyway. I think there should be more advocacy in relation to looking at getting other agencies to look into this area in the future. But I congratulate the staff for what they've done here, but just to take the nod, Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Questions, yes?
Yeah, I just have one. It says in here, using various methods. I just wondered what the methods were that you actually used to engage the community?
Through you, Mayor, to councillor Young. Every type of method from preschool ages, children drawing pictures in response to questions such as, what makes me happy, what things worry me, what do I like about living here, right through to detailed questions for service providers about what their scope of their services are and what they see as their priorities. So in previous reports to council, we've actually provided any more detail. And I might just add, this document and several other documents that are attached are made available for the wider community and for agencies because so much data is gleaned by the consultations, and we don't want that to get lost. We would love for other agencies to use that data in their own planning. So this is not a council-specific document, this is a document that can be used by anyone because the feedback from the community is so broad.
Councillor Bennet?
I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Myers. Could you find in your report, how often is documents likely to be reviewed?
Through you, Mayor, to councillor Bennet. We have planned to do a, every three years, to do a midpoint review, if you like, a little bit of a review. So rather than doing a full rewrite every four or five years, which has been the trend for a lot of strategic plans, we've known that there could be a lot of things, so we'll do a bit of a refresh and see if the data's changing on anything or if we need to reallocate. So every two to three years, we will go to exercise with that, and that's been incorporated in the draft major projects plans as well.
And I've asked this before, the drawings that the children did during the presentation, are they displayed anywhere? Can they be?
Through you, Mayor, councillor Bennet. They have been, they can be, and yes.
They will be.
They will be, yes. We actually have them painted up, and we would really love to have them got ran as a bit of a, I don't know, bit of exhibition, if you like, or something, so. Thanks for chatting to all.
I'd like to thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? They've been done, they've been done. Can we have another question? Move councillor McPhee.
Yeah, I'm going to go to the ladies' room.
You just sing to councillor Bennet. Would you like to speak, councillor Bennet?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Myers. Yeah, first, Mr. Myers, if you could pass back to the staff who put this together. Look, overall, it is a great plan. I strongly believe, though, local government is situated to be the prime driver of this. This is more about education, health, answer questions I put to you earlier. It is a great thing, there is something lacking in the area because some of the comments made here through the community about people working in silos, they're not being collaborative with different agencies. So I think this is a great document to put them together, and I think this should be pulled together by someone more tuned to it as it, like I said before, particular areas like the Department of Education and the Department of Health. We are, as a local government, we are stepping back in relation to age care. There's less in relation to age care out there than there is early years, as in the agencies that are available. So I think, I was primarily believing, do need to advocate and get the government on board. It is an important part of anyone's life, early years, it's about getting that right because that's what makes a better people into the future, a better for our community. And, look, I'm all for the plan, but I honestly believe we need to advocate to get into someone else's hands, a more professional local government. But once again, thank you to the staff who put this together in collaboration with the other agencies, so you can pass it on. Thank you.
Councillor McPhee, councillor Bennet?
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I'd just like to reiterate what councillor McPhee said with regard to the document. It is a fantastic document, and whilst reading it, I had the same thought, that it's not just a council document, it applies to caregivers, it applies to educators, it applies to all those different service providers that have been consulted during the process. So congratulations on that, and this in conjunction with the youth strategy certainly does pave the way for a bright future for our municipalities' young people. So it's a great thing. Thank you.
Any further speakers for? Yes, councillor Bennet?
I'd also like to appreciate the great work done in that municipal early and middle years plan. I think the report does highlight certain concerns within our community, and I think it's great to see us working collaboratively for those important issues. We've had a time of great prosperity in our region. Certainly got our challenges ahead of us in the next year or so. But there are some concerning statistics. Children in low welfare dependent families have gone up, socioeconomic disadvantage, disability, psychological distress, full-time participation in school education is down, child protection substantiations are up. Percentage of school students who feel socially connected and get along with their peers. So I think it's just throwing down the gauntlet for us to have in mind all of those concerns. We have a great opportunity to form a fantastic community, and let's all embrace that and take on the challenge.
Any further speakers, or any against the motion? None, or go to a vote. All as a favor? Do you? You've now passed in that, Mr. Bennet. Item B, twenty point one six, S five instrument of delegation to the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. This report details the delegations that are provided by council to lead. They are provided on the advice of Maddox, who run a referable service for all councils. Our advice over a number of years has been that our delegation should be updated and refreshed on a six monthly cycle. And so councils will see these reports having come previously and will continue to come. In respect of the S five delegations, which are delegations from council to the CEO, there are in fact no amendments in this raft of delegations from, as they currently sit. But in order to keep the delegation refreshed every six months, we recommend that we at least consider those. So, Mr. Bennet, recommending the council exercise its powers conferred under section ninety-eight of the Local Government Act and other legislation referred to in the attached instrument are delegated as attached, and delegate to the person holding the position of chief executive officer or acting CEO the powers, duties and functions set out in the attached instrument. And also recommending that councillor fix the seal to the instrument.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Questions, councillors? If there are no questions, time to move, please. Yes, councillor Johnson, my seconded. Councillor Jeffrey? Speak to the motion, councillor Johnson.
That's just a bit of a refresh of the documentation there, Mr. Bennet, so.
No, it's allegations of the same, not amended, some have been found.
Yep. Some further speakers, or against? Okay, we go to a vote, all as a favor. Passed unanimously. Item B, one seven, section, are these six instrument of delegation to members of council staff?
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. These are delegations from council direct to staff. There are a number of statutory positions where council doesn't delegate to the CEO, but to directly to the staff member. Examples of those are municipal building surveyors, is the common example cited. Also, at times, there's some delegations direct to authorized offices in respect of planning and local laws matters. The report has an attachment, which is an email letter from Maddox that sets out the changes. And they are primarily a number of amendments or removals that result from changed legislation. The first is the Rail Safety Local Operations Act of two thousand and six, which has been repealed, so any references to that act have been removed. And there's about three pages off those amendments. So, Mr. Bennet, recommending, at the top of it, that council amend the schedule of delegations and delegate to members of council staff in accordance with the attachment, and revoke all previous delegations related to the amendment.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? There are no questions. Can I have a move, please? Move councillor, please. Seconded, please, councillor Young. Mr. Speaker's motion, councillor?
Yeah, but, Mr. Bennet, these delegations are just to keep the operation of council running smoothly, that the council themselves, as the councillors, don't have to meet every week or every day to make decisions. But one thing over time of our council that we are very firm on is that anything that is rejected will come to a council meeting. We do not delegate that to officers. So if there's objection or a law to a planning permit, that type of thing, and the officers are not allowed to make that decision, that will then come to a council meeting for decisions. That's one thing we're very clear on, if there's objections to any of these, that's when they normally come to a council meeting. But otherwise, it's just, it's practice that we do this to save us, we didn't give the other day. Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Thank you. Councillor Young, just.
No, I think that's not fair said, what needs to be said?
Thank you. Any further speakers for, or against the motion? No. Okay, we'll go to a vote, all as a favor. Do, passed unanimously. Item B, twenty one eight, our place vision, mission and purpose statement. Ms. Green, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Over the past six or so months, councillors have worked to develop the vision, mission and purpose statements for the Our Place project. The Our Place project being a major capital project that this council will deliver in its term. Commenced to deliver in its term. Council, each individual councillor put a lot of time and effort into developing this to truly reflect what they thought was the vision for the Our Place building. Not just the building, but what the users will do and provide to the community. And the good thing is that this can be used by staff and the community in also talking about this new development. So the vision is a place to return, remember, respect and dream, valuing and inspiring our region's past, present and present and future. The mission, our region's learning, interpretation and information hub. Positioned proudly, sharing our unique local stories, providing, enriching and capturing insight into our histories, cultures and community, and delivering memorable experiences for all who visit, live and work in our region. I won't go through the municipal documents, but the recommendation is that council adopt the vision, mission and purpose statements for Our Place Swan Hill, and these will be used in further design work for the development, and then how that place operates into the future when it's being used.
Questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee?
I don't, you should do with the idea behind the vision, mission and purpose. Might be putting the cart before the horse in some ways, putting it in when we haven't decided where our place is going to be built.
Well, I don't think so. I think it's really important in helping you decide which is the right place. So it really is about your view of what you want this building to do for the community and be for the community. So to me, it doesn't matter where the building ends up, this is what we want to achieve. Something you can go back to and say, well, does this site, does this design, do any of this is in it, meet what we wanted in terms of the vision?
Yes, just one more. By accepting those recommendations, it doesn't force you to do any particular place.
No.
Any further questions, councillors? If there are none, can I have a move, please? Remove councillor Bennet. Do I have a second to councillor Johnson? Thank you. Just speak, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I do love the vision, mission and purpose statement. I think it's, I think it's black to have these established now. It gives a much, without giving strict boundaries, it gives at least a path and an overall big picture vision. And I like big pictures. So the vision statement in itself, remember, respect, dream, massive fan, obviously, congratulations. Up to this point and the community consultation, I think that needs to continue. And I really think we have an opportunity here to respect and celebrate our Aboriginal people of Swan Hill and the surrounds, and it's something we need to continue to consult on in a consistent, continuous manner. So I think these statements are a great place to begin almost again and create a great path moving forward.
Thank you, councillor Young. Would you like to speak, councillor Johnson?
Yeah, totally agree with councillor Bennet. These are strong, focused, confident statements. It's an exciting proposal, and probably for me, the purpose there is saying that including all people and events that have contributed to the defining of our region, if we can stay true to this, then we're going to have a great facility.
Thank you. Any further speakers for? Could you be a councillor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Certainly, I like the values and missions and the statement here. The document, the document in the community, we know the future of the Pioneer Settlement. Polls arrange of views, ideas, both as historical information or attachment to the Pioneer Settlement. And movement into the future, we know that to operation, the location of the new building, and how the Pioneer Settlement operates into the future is something that my feeling is embedded into the values and missions that we've got here. So I look forward to continuing to the days of the council and the future of the Pioneer Settlement.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further speakers for?
Oh, Mr. Bennet, yeah, look, I agree with what you said, the vision, mission and that. Look, I've got no issues with that at all, the way it's set out. I think it is a good, wherever this place goes, religious council, this doesn't fix us into any one spot in the future. Thank you.
Any further speakers for, or against any opposed views? Then we'll go straight for a vote. Post in favor? Ask him then, I'll speak. Thank you. Item B, twenty point one nine, layman's application for a subdivision of land, eight lots in a general residential zone. Ms. Green?
This application is for the subdivision of some land in Rommel Vale. And perhaps you'll recall, it carried out a housing strategy last year, which recommended the need for more residential development of all sorts in Rommel Vale, from unit development to rural living type development. Council owns this land, which abuts the Rommel Vale college, and proposed to do an eight lot subdivision of that land, which are small wishlots, which would allow for small houses on them. There was one objection to the subdivision, and that's highlighted in this report, largely around parking. The two issues raised have been covered in this report. And parking, the road width is wide enough for parking to carry on both sides. Parking now cannot occur near the park because there is a solid white line there. So that can be enforced as necessary, largely the concern of the objective. The recommendation is that it meets all requirements of council's planning scheme, and that it should be approved. So the recommendation is that council should make the decision to grant a permit for the subdivision of lots in Rommel Street, subject to a series of standard conditions, or that's the style of subdivision.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor?
Sorry, questions that I can, Mr. Bennet? Is council subdivision of land or subdivision of land that's subdivision here?
Council subdivision.
Thank you.
Yeah, the necessary provisions in the, in the parent and the approval. There's no measure of gas, is that something you could put in the hand? Rommel Vale's got the measure of gas in the gas pump. Is that something that normal people, you can have that?
Yes, we would. If there's natural gas in Rommel Vale, we normally would have it as a requirement.
It's just that it's not provided by a statutory authority, it's a private consortium that's providing it.
So that's what we're going to do then. Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah. Come, call my three question, Mr. Bennet. Come back to me later.
Thank you.
I have a few too, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Do we know what the width of Rommel Street is?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I did ask the question. Is it wide enough for parallel parking on either side? And the answer I was given was yes.
And that was going to be my next question. Is it different from most standard suburban streets?
Not as, as I said, I asked the question, the same as you've just asked.
Yeah.
For sure, if one's wide.
Yeah. And my last question was, the properties that could potentially, I know this is probably putting the horse forward a car, but would it be safe to assume that any properties built there will have places to park, such as a driveway?
Yes. So even though they're small wishlots, if they're, I think the report goes through that, if they're two bedroom, they have to have this one, about parking between there and those two. Most people would also have a driveway, and there's only a small one that allows for one car. There will be more parking on the street. It's a factor, so that will happen. We're not about stopping there, parking on the street.
No, but there's currently a white line to park.
Yes, so they can't park there, and we can enforce it where the parking is. If needed.
Maybe one, one block.
Yeah. And of course, sorry, and down near the corner with Alexander Street, there'll be limits on parking on the street there as well.
Further questions, yes, councillor McPhee? Come, there's Ms. Green. Why are we going?
Why are we going to your services after the decision to grant a permit? Why don't we go to them before?
We do go to them before.
That was one of the conditions, I thought, was to, and the recommendations with those conditions, and then you've got, must be referred to along Murray Water.
So that's after they're done with the work. So we have to keep going back to the service authorities to make sure the services are being put in appropriately. Is that under which condition, councillor McPhee?
I'll send you a condition, you're not far down with water, you're a power core.
So the certification must go back to Al Murray Water. So it's, the various stages through the subdivision process, things go back to various service authorities.
And being the applicant and the responsible authority, how does council manage a conflict?
You have to keep taking your hats on and on.
I understand that, yeah. I just got a viewing board and that was all I was asking for.
So at the moment, you are the responsible authority and you need to treat it as if it's not your subdivision.
And accordingly, this is one last question, Mr Mayor. So those conditions are the conditions will be placed on any applicant, we're not short serving in any way, anything, easy for ourselves.
Very standard.
Thank you.
Councillor Smith. Any further questions? Councillor Jeffrey, is your question answered? Thank you. No further questions? Can I have a mover please?
I'll move as per the recommendations.
Any further questions, councillor Smith? Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I do appreciate all forms of community engagement. Obviously, we need to do this, particularly with developments like this, because it will create a very different look to the landscape along Ronan Street, which has not ever had anything there. However, Robben Vale is in the midst of a housing crisis and we do need, as you said, Ms Green, that we need housing hall types in Robben Vale because there's simply a lack of properties that are vacant and that has become glaringly apparent in the last couple of months with people trying to be isolated and socially distant. Also, I think with the, it's all been addressed in the, in the report about how parking is going to be addressed and also once the library is completed, there's the potential for extra car park there as well. So I think this is actually a really positive thing for Robben Vale and I think it's, it's a great thing that Swan Hill Royal City Council stepping outside of some boundaries here that council normally wouldn't be, given the conflict of interest that councillor McPhee demonstrated. So I think this is, this is a fantastic subdivision in the right way.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, this is just a very small version of what we've done in Swan Hill. Council have done the housing strategy, you can be found that there's a lack of housing, a different style of housing required in Robben Vale. We've been pushing and advocating for developers to come in all this time, but we found some land that we own, that we can subdivide, we can build housing on, very similar to what happened in Swan Hill many years ago with the Tower Hill project, on a lot smaller scale, but it's the same thing. It's to council, to identify the issues through the housing strategy. No one else is putting their hand up, so we are putting our hand up, develop those houses and hopefully from this other development may flow on. Thank you.
Any further speakers for? Yes, councillor?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to the initiative and endorse everything that the mayor and the secondary has actually already commented on. I think it's a great initiative that we've been talking about this for quite a long time to get, I suppose, an example that other people in Robben Vale will hopefully now continue on and do more development as well. So I think congratulations, needs to go to the city council for what we've actually done and I think it can only really work in our favour and for the community of Robben Vale.
Thank you. Any further speakers for? Any against? You have the wrong reply. Councillor Benham, are you close to that? That one? Okay. Let's move to a vote. Are those in favour? Pass it down, Mr Mayor. What's on the agenda on the 2020 municipal emergency management subplans? Ms Green.
Not a very timely report. Just to give you a little bit more background and some of you will know this information, but I'll keep this brief. In times of emergencies, traditionally fire and flood, council has responsibilities in three areas and these are out under the emergency management mandate in Victoria and they are prevention, risk mitigation, risk reduction mitigation, response activities and then relief and recovery. And council has responsibilities in all those three areas. Council's responsibilities are then outlined in the municipal emergency management plan and that's used by the municipal emergency management planning committee to, or have some order around those three things so that council knows what its responsibilities are. The most recent municipal management plan was enacted in October 17 and on the 17th of December 2019, the council appointed its delegates to that and that's councillor McPhee and councillor Jeffries. There are also other events that this plan covers and they include heat waves and influenza pandemics. Council has had a heat health plan, or it was called a heat wave plan since 2009 and has had a pandemic plan since 2012. Both these plans need re-reviewing and they have been reviewed over the last six months and it's largely to include relevant legislation upgrades by the state government, also update contacts that are listed in them and any other guidelines to ensure that it is in line with the state plan. Key components of the plans include local context, so for instance, in the pandemic plan, it does talk about the Swan Hill hospital serving a much greater spread, not just the municipality. So that's something that's unique to our municipality. They provide public health control measures, this is the pandemic plan, mass vaccinations, mass fatality, fatality plans, food security and communication. And then if you wanted to look at the table of contents, if you haven't read the whole plan, it provides a good overview of that. So what you might be thinking about is the pandemic plan, we actually have enacted the pandemic plan with council's business continuity plan and at the moment, an internal group of council officers have been meeting on a daily basis to make sure we follow both those plans, to ensure that council has carried out its role in this current pandemic. And we've now dropped those meetings to, I think, twice a week. The council's environmental health officers are meeting with DHHS on a daily basis and they're not normally weekly to make sure that we're kept up to date with what's happening at state level and we communicate any urgent changes directly to that committee that meets daily, including council. You'll have noticed in your report that you have two paragraphs that have been repeated under consultation, under discussion and consultation and I've given you a hard copy of that report updated. So both the, these two subplans have been considered by all agencies performing the municipal emergency planning committee and have been updated with input from all the service, emergency servicing authorities in particular, in this case, DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services. So council's role in this is to really endorse these so they can continue being used by the committees that are currently, well, obviously using the pandemic plan at the moment and come summer, when we have the next heat event, we'll be potentially using the heat health plan as well. So the recommendation is that council adopt both the heat health plan as presented and the influenza pandemic plan.
Thank you, Ms Green. Questions, councillors?
Just one question. Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the influenza pandemic plan, two members of this example have got individuals, municipal name in all those roles. This does have to come through council, then people retire and take on those roles.
I don't believe so.
Any further questions, councillors? There being none. Can I have a mover please? Number councillor Benham, second to councillor McPhee. Do you wish to speak to the proposal?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a very timely report to come to council and we're extremely lucky in Swan Hill Royal City Council and probably quite unique in the sense that on council, we have two members of the emergency services and a healthcare worker in councillor McPhee, Jeffries and McKay. So being prepared is, it probably puts us a couple of steps ahead of that curve that we're trying to flatten and could ultimately be why we're faring so well in the current pandemic. So having a comprehensive and effective plan clearly put in place by a committee that is, that has two members of emergency services and members of council and people that make it their last work to be emergency first responders is clearly beneficial. So I'd like to actually formally thank councillor McPhee, councillor Jeffries and councillor McKay for their work and for your service and all healthcare workers, I suppose, at the moment. I think it's probably appropriate that during this report that it's come now. So thank you all for your service and thank you for the report and for this plan.
Councillor Benham.
Yeah, Mr Green touched on it, the municipal emergency management committee involves, as councillor Benham said, all emergency services, hospitals, water wards, involves everyone. The emergency manager planning is about, local government plays a big role in that. We are never a control agency in any emergency, that is specific agencies. With the current pandemic we've got at the moment, that's DHHS and it's quite different to a lot of other plans or other emergencies we've had in the past, where this is where it actually escalated at a federal level than state level rather than at a local level. Our planning normally occurs the other way around, at a local level, then escalates to other areas. But because of the situation we're in, it's reversed control, but council do play an important role, necessarily keeping these plans up to date. We meet regularly to review this plan and we look at all the risks throughout our community to ensure that we have the best and safest place possible that we can live in. So just like to thank the other members of the planning committee to put these plans together and I think, as councillor Benham said, we are in a good place.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers? Yes, councillor Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There are two fantastic plans that, one's in infamation at the moment, but it is good to be as a councillor and a law officer, so service before all this, a good plan in place and we can plan for the worst, I hope for the best. Our time is now, I don't have any complaints, but that's what is happening now, so therefore it's all the plans as they are.
Thank you. Any further speakers for? Councillor Benham.
I'd like to convey my appreciation of the comprehensiveness of this plan. It's fully appropriate that council has a role to play in public health. It is just many decades since we've probably had to play such an extensive role in public health and contemplate many different areas that has not been in the forefront of council's responsibilities like that is now. I appreciate the acknowledgement of our responsibility for some social and needs such for the vulnerable in the community and it is very comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers for? Any against?
Mr Mayor, am I at the wrong time to suggest an amendment? Yes.
We haven't had a motion yet.
No.
Sorry, yes, we did. Sorry about it. Come on, sorry.
So he said to her. Yeah, you've got, Mr Mayor, you have a motion.
Yeah, let's accept it.
So if councillor McKay wishes to move the motion?
Yes, if you're going to accept an amendment to the motion.
It's purely a technicality. This is called the influenza pandemic plan, but the current pandemic that we're experiencing is not an influenza disease, it's a virus definitely and I just wonder if the title should be a pandemic plan rather than influenza, given that, I know that in previous times it was...
So what is your opinion?
That we alter the title of the plan to simply pandemic plan to encompass any type illness that is pandemic in nature.
It's one of the city council, is it an amendment to dot point two, is it?
This would be best dealt with by just removing the word influenza.
Yes.
Recommendation two, that's, that's removed the motion.
Do I have a second or have I a minute?
You have a second.
Now, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to read it right, but in all other ways, the plan is comprehensive and suitable and it's purely a technicality.
Councillor Benham.
I actually had the thought as I was speaking that the word influenza should probably be removed because it's not an influenza pandemic that we're going through at the moment, but it is a pandemic.
Any further speakers for the amendment? Any against the amendment? Yes, councillor?
I'll speak against you, Mr Mayor. We've had special services within the municipal emergency management planning committee look at those plans. This influenza pandemic plan is not directed at the COVID pandemic we have now, it is talking about an influenza pandemic plan. That's what it's talking about, it's not talking about a COVID-19. We are in a COVID-19 situation now, but that's not what, that plan could be aligned to it in similar ways, but the plan actually owns that influenza pandemic, not a COVID-19 plan, so I don't think we should be changing the name because these are emergency services and the experts of the planning have looked at that and that's what the plan is supposed to target, not what we're going through now. Thank you.
Councillor Young, do you wish to speak?
I was just going to make a comment that I felt that by just making it a pandemic plan, it might be restricting the actual plan, that it could be also applied to other types of cases that are similar, like influenza, so maybe it should be worth to say influenza- pandemic plan or somehow coordinate or incorporate the two into the plan or even other types of things that might happen.
Thank you. Any further speakers for? The amendment. And now, can we, any against? Do you want to close the report by councillor McKay?
I just, I think that we're utilizing this plan at present, can I confirm that? For our current management of this pandemic, so I think, I think the pandemic would cover all the illnesses that formerly took criteria of being a worldwide phenomenon, so I don't see any problem with adopting the name pandemic, but or slash influenza. Thank you.
Will we move through a vote, those for the amendment? Those against the amendment? Did you get it?
It's four.
Four, three.
I had it for everything.
So a motion, the amendment is carried.
Mr Mayor, the amendment now becomes initial motion, now we vote on that again?
Yes.
Are we going to have a vote?
Exactly. Do we proceed with debate or have a debate? There's amended motion to vote.
So that is now, the amendment is now a motion?
The amendment, amended motion is now a motion. Do you want me to speak on that again? Yeah, I think we need to, yes. Councillor McKay, amended motion, do you wish to speak to the amended motion?
As stated, I think both plans are very comprehensive, well done and serving us well in this current situation and will into the future. Just a note, I suppose, is that heat health plan will be very relevant looking at increasing temperatures and need.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
Really quickly, I think, we're not adding in the word COVID-19, it's not mentioned in here. All we're doing is removing influenza because we are, this pandemic plan is in place at the moment and like I said earlier, it's not an influenza pandemic, it's a pandemic, so it just makes it a little bit broader rather than narrowing it as an influenza plan.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Against, for the motion, have a vote? Any against?
If you look at the very first part, the aims and the objections of the plan, the aim of this planning is to assist in reducing the impact of an influenza pandemic on the municipality, provide support and recovery throughout the duration of the influenza pandemic and it goes on and on and on throughout the... pandemic. And it goes on and on and on. Throughout the document is talking about an influenza pandemic. We're changing the name of it. We have had the experts, as I say, the people involved in this, the Department of Human Services, the hospital, health services, they've all looked at this. It should be called what it is. By changing the name, we are changing the whole intent of what the document is, just because we're using it in most times and the similar, because the COVID is a similar situation. We shouldn't be changing the name. This is a subcommittee of council that have endorsed this plan that comes to us to be endorsed at a council level. So the municipal emergency management committee, which I chair, all those people have endorsed this plan in its form as it is. We shouldn't be in a position to be changing it ourselves. That is not our role, councillors. Thank you.
I would speak to councillor Jeffrey.
Speak against. Well, I don't have an issue with council adopting a pandemic plan, but if we take out the word influenza out of the pandemic plan, is the plan captured? Well, a broad spectrum of pandemic would require in our plan to cover. So that is my concern is just removing the word influenza is what are we missing? That we should be planning a broader pandemic plan that isn't being used for influenza pandemic. That's my concern. That's why I feel it should be left as an influenza pandemic plan or table to put back to the committee and the experts to get further input onto what a broader pandemic plan should cover. We're at the moment, the document follows a specific requirement for influenza pandemic plan. I understand we can use it for the current situation we're in, but I'm sure if you reflect on what the state and federal government have done over the last two, three months is, there's a lot of information to send out of this that could potentially include for a broader pandemic. So I'd rather adopt it as an influenza pandemic plan. And if council say so, go and adopt the pandemic plan.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers against the amended motion? Councillor McKay, would you like to co-host the debate?
I can understand the concerns, councillor Jeffrey. I, how I can do say that it is broadly suitable for the general pandemic situation. So my favour calling it a pandemic plan, given that we're utilizing it at the moment and we can view it at a later date.
Thank you councillor McKay. Allow me to vote. Those in favour of the amended motion?
Kind of organized, yeah. Put the amended motion, but we're removing the whole motion to the top, both of them.
Yes, the amended motion now becomes the motion. It's become the motion. So we voted on the amended motion as on the screen then? Which is as per, yeah. Yes. So when we vote, call for a vote for the motion as amended, as on the screen. And councillor McKay, councillor Benham, two. Those against the amended motion? Against the motion, perhaps?
That's lost.
Lost, no. The motion is lost. We now revert back to the original motion? Second, move to the motion?
Well, it's already been moved to second.
It's already been moved to second. So in the throes of debate. We've had speakers Jeffrey, Benham, McPhee and McKay speaking on the motion. Any further speakers for the original motion? We don't have any speakers for the original motion. Councillor Benham, you have the right to reply. As you move to the original motion.
I did. And as I'm sitting here listening to councillor McPhee, who I said in the first one and congratulated, that I feel like now, sitting back, and I might admit it, but I probably contradicted myself wanting to make a change that councillor McPhee doesn't agree with. And I'm okay with admitting that. So I'm having to move the motion as per the recommendation with the word influenza as it stands.
Thank you councillor Benham. We've now completed all our speakers and will now go to a vote. All those in favour of the original motion. Thank you. And those against? Councillor McPhee, the motion is proposed six points. Thank you. Item B twenty point two two, Swan Hill, sorry, item B twenty one, drag strip, project of investigation plan, am I proposed?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report seeks council's endorsement for additional destructive and non-destructive testing of the Swan Hill Drag Strip to gain an understanding of the extent and type of issues experienced with the racing surface. Council will remember that in December of 2019, those officers put a request to cancel for some, in August nineteen, a lot of progress was gained for urgent repairs of the drag strip. Those who completed any assembly in 2019, council requested officers to prepare an investigation plan and seek authorisation prior to any further money being spent, as the repairs didn't prove to be sufficient enough for the racing track to be returned back to normal operations. As a consequence, our engineering team engaged the experience and long-regarded consultants from KET international to make recommendations on further investigations based on information that we provided and a side inspection in January. During that side inspection, seven major defects and four minor defective issues were raised and the technical information of types and locations of those defects are outlined in the report. The suggested investigation includes ground penetrating radar survey, which is targeted so to maximise the data that we collect versus the dollars that we need to spend. So we're not proposing to survey the full length of the track, some coring of pavement, bolting the concrete end in the asphalt sections, so to determine suitor formation strength and possibly confirm any voids under the concrete slabs, and also the creation of two test pits and interface between the concrete and the asphalt sections. So the cost of those further investigations is just shy of $31,000, which geotechnical is just shy of $9,000 and the ground penetrating radar mapping is just over $22,000. The $170,000 that were approved for urgent repair in August by council have been utilized for all the repairs and for the preliminary investigation. We have spent just over $112,000 out of the 170, which leaves us with a residual of that budget of almost $58,000. So the intent is that the result of those investigations will allow us to make a recommendation and also cost works required to bring the drag strip to the expected standard of such facility. The result may recommend works or suggest the investment required cannot be justified. So today we are actually seeking approval from council to proceed with the investigations as outlined in the report, to authorize us to spend the approximately $31,000 for that investigation out of the previously approved $170,000 and to consult with the user groups at the conclusion of the investigation prior to providing council with the detailed report of findings and the outcomes of that consultation and the recommended way forward.
Thank you, councillor. Questions? Councillor Benham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The geotech investigations and the GPR survey, are they guaranteed to show us what's the underlying problem with the drag strip? Were guaranteed to get a result out of this?
True, Mr Mayor. I'll be very careful of using the word guaranteed unless we lift the whole surface to see what's underneath. There is no absolute guarantee, but that is as close as we can get without really having to undo all the work that's been done. So the older sections have been targeted, so they're not random samples. They're targeted for what the visual defects tell us that the issues could be.
One more question, Mr Mayor. The user groups that we talk about, what user groups are they? Is there one or is there several?
True, Mr Mayor. That would be the Swan Hill Drag Strip Racing Club.
And that's the only user group that's been consulted?
Well, we are not proposing to consult with you. We know really what the outcome is because, I mean, the extent of the damage might be too great. So we want to be able to go to the club and actually show them the results of the investigation and gain an understanding of how prepared are they to participate in a potentially collaborative one with council to rectify issues if that is possible. So we can bring to council a potential solution that would suit the users and the council. Or otherwise, tell council that we will not get a mention of the user group on the report.
Thank you.
But the user group, Mr Mayor, currently is continuing to do the normal maintenance on the drag strip as a whole, not just the racing surface. So they do still weed spraying and they do moldering. So they still do some voluntary work in the hope that the strip will be returned to racing, which we are currently not in a position to even discuss with them.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It leads me to one more question. We have, in this municipality, we have a national champion drag racer. Is there potential to perhaps extend the consultation to someone that's not part of the actual user group, but someone that could perhaps lend an expert opinion on the track itself?
I'm probably not the qualified person to say whether it is possible or not because it depends on what agreement we have with the drag strip for the use and operation of the drag strip. So I'd like to check that before I answer the question.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Point question. Thank you, Mr Mayor. You've got ahead with the recommendations here. And we do the test, cut out concrete, core holes. It's only a bit of a budget to, what are we doing after? Probably patching it, I'll be filling it up. What's the remediation work to down to a point of damage to the drag strip?
True, Mr Mayor. We will just reset the design. So we will repair it to the same standard as this, unless we find that underneath, for example, there are huge voids. In that case, there's no point in feeling.
So is that included in this? That's not included in the, that would have had to be a cost to, what's that?
My understanding is that it's included in the cost.
That's not, again, that would have to take by those two companies. I've looked at it, council.
Not all the two companies.
Okay, thank you.
Yes councillor Jeffrey. Head to head, under a thorough detailed inspection that went for one day. Who did the detailed inspection?
So, true, Mr Mayor. The last council sent back provided the name of the experts that came from Sydney to do the inspection. I do apologize, I don't remember his name off the top of my head.
George.
So was one person?
Yes.
Who from council were involved?
So we had our engineering team, we had National Iceland, we had Kerry Young, we had David Hogen. So that's the core engineering team. That is a visual inspection and this is how the areas where you need to do a little bit more of either destructive or ground penetrating radar testing.
I just have concerns about the count of a detailed inspection when you've got one outside person fielding the track. That's an opinion basically.
It's a detailed visual inspection. It's similar to how a pre-purchased building report is done. It's a detailed visual inspection building report without having any ability to do destructive testing to confirm all the knowledge. So it's more likely than not that this is the issue, but we need to do a little bit more to confirm that.
All right. Just another question, Mr Mayor. In relation to the recommendations you're putting up, you've got developer repair plan and cost as opposed on the pavement geotechnical investigation at part two. Is there scope, like you say you can't guarantee that it'll fix it? This is obviously going to come back to council for a decision as to where we go with the repair plan?
True, Mr Mayor, absolutely.
All right, let's go on after that. Thank you. Yes.
I've just got a question about, back again about the user groups. When we're talking about, I'm a bit confused about who you're referring to as being the user group, like groups. Like if it's only the drag strip people, that would be user groups. So who else are you actually referring to? It's not the whole Chisen Reserve people, is it? Like, well, who's it referring to?
True, Mr Mayor. It's not the whole Chisen Reserve.
No. So who are the user groups connected to the drag strip? The drag strip. So it's really a user group, not user groups? Okay.
Any further questions, councillors? Can I have a move then, please?
Oh, maybe that's kind of the recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Do I have a second? Oh, second, Mr Mayor. What's the second? Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I know the drag strip is in a position where it can't be wasted by the drag club as it currently is, despite a fairly good amount of money being spent on it to go on to maintain it, repair it, get it rid from waste meetings. Unfortunately, the last waste meeting wasn't able to happen despite the recent going. But I think where we need to get to as a council is a decision on whether we rip it up, build it again, or whether we walk away. Now, some councillors will, at the end of the day, we need to have enough information in front of us to make that hard decision. And we either today make a decision to walk away or leave it as it is, or do a detailed inspection by tool through into the concrete to see what is happening underneath so that we can come to that decision. It's another $31,000 to make a decision, which is a fair, again, a fair amount of money. But I think where you need to apply for this council or the council that we've been elected in October, they're not details to make that hard decision. So it allows a fair bit of money, but we need to have enough information in front of us to make the right decisions. What we do with what has been investment in our municipality that hasn't given us the rubber and something like. So that's why I'm in favour with these recommendations and the investigation before this.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Actually, the form is quite ironic that the two councillors were moving this motion. One of them was in prison, being myself when the $170,000 was put to spend the money. And the other councillor voted against it. If I had won that money, I would have voted against that $170,000 as well. However, that being said, the fact that the council has previously said we will spend $170,000 on this drag strip, the officers could have just done this without bringing it back to council because that money is still in the budget that was voted on by a council to say, yes, we will spend the $170,000. So we're not going above that $170,000. We're not spending any more money on it. I am very cautious. We should have all the information, as councillor Jeffrey said, before we make any other decision. This is the best way forward and I certainly hope that the development, to develop a repair plan, when that is developed, some of the information that comes back to council is what guarantee is it going to be that the track will run and for what time period? Because this is the whole process through this thing. It seems that the council, everyone's coming back to council or the users are coming back to council wanting money for council to fix this. There's going to come a time where we've got to throw the shovel out of the hole and stop digging. If we can't fix this properly, we've got to make hard decisions, councillors, and this is one of them. So I'm not actually saying to spend any more money on it. The money had already been voted on to be spent by this council. And that's why I say it's quite ironic that the two moved this motion, the two that would have voted against that $170,000. But at least we're prepared to stand up and say, let's get that information properly and go along with it and spend that $170,000, but not further. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any against? Let the board reply, councillor Jeffrey.
I think that's fine.
Okay, we'll move to a vote. All those in favour? Those not against, we'll pass to the others. Next item on the agenda, item B twenty dot two, Swan Hill Airdrag and Australian Aviation Alliance.
Mr Mayor?
Yes, councillor Benham?
I'd like to force out a motion.
Yes.
After the report.
Okay. Please, Mr Mayor. You're up, Mr Clinton.
Get the national report.
Do you have some idea of the nature of the motion?
To lay the report on the table with some detailed requests.
So thank you, Mr Mayor. The report, 20.22, details the state of discussions between this municipality and the Australian Aviation Alliance in respect of establishing a flight school at the Swan Hill Aerodrome. Council did resolve, I think it was in November, to proceed to negotiate a lease, sorry, a lease with that organisation, and we've now developed up a draft heads of agreement. I do apologize to council that a superseded version of the heads of agreement was included in the agenda, which was my error. We've since included and circulated the correct heads of agreement. Councillors will see on their tables a copy of the up-to-date version, and we've printed in red the changed text for the version included in the agenda, so it makes it easier to understand where the changes are. Since we talked in November, November and December, the world has changed significantly, and there are significantly more risks to the global economy and particularly to aviation. We've seen in the past whenever there's a significant worldwide economic shock, that aviation is one of the first to be hit and one of the last to recover. And we certainly are in some uncharted waters. The proposal, as was being worked, would have seen council spend, at this point, an indeterminate amount of money, but in excess of $2 million in developing up infrastructure that all users of the aerodrome would benefit from. So runway improvements, taxiway strength, the provision of jet A1 fuel, et cetera, but also additional dollars which could have been the vicinity of $1 million to establish buildings and works specifically for the flight school. The heads of agreement that has been circulated pulls back from that somewhat and basically spells out an intent between the two parties to negotiate a lease that will then come back to council for approval before being signed. In fact, a lease that will be sanctioned fully by council. In those discussions, it will ensure if this recommendation is approved, we will seek to try and mitigate some of the financial risks to council and balance it against the economic opportunities that this proposal would bring. So, Mr Mayor, I think other than that, the report provides sufficient detail. If I could take councillors' attention to the heads of agreement document that is in loose form on your desk. You'll see that the language has changed. We've removed, gone away from the terms buildings and talked about the site. We are proposing to lease a site to the, to AAA, as they know, the Australian Aviation Alliance. We've also proposed in there a list of works that council would undertake, that these would be subject to funding because that funding, we expected to have had announced by now, we'd be in a much more certain position as to whether we would receive federal government assistance for aerodrome upgrades. Given the whole Australia's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, a lot of those decisions have been pushed back. We're told at this point in time we should expect announcements on these funding applications in June. So put in there some controls to, or some safeguards to say we don't guarantee those works, particularly in line with funding not yet being confirmed. In addition to that, we've pushed back the negotiation period back to the 31st of December this year, which will give us significant time to negotiate with Australian Aviation Alliance and seek to mitigate the financial risks to council in establishing and investing significant dollars in facilities that will just benefit the one organisation. In addition to that, Mr Mayor, I don't think there's a great deal to say. The report talks in general terms about the sort of benefits that this could bring to the municipality of having another up to 200 trainee pilots in the town, along with about 50 instructors and administrative personnel. What we're recommending, what I'm recommending and asking council to do, Mr Mayor, is to authorise the chief executive officer to intervent in our heads of agreement with the Australian Aviation Alliance and therefore attach the reports on the performance of the circular.
Questions, councillors?
Mr Seer, with regard to level of commitment, where does heads of agreements sit versus a lease agreement? Obviously, a lease agreement is a document that's done once things have been agreed to, but with the heads of agreement, where does that put us as far as, does it take us to a, like, tea discussion where we both have an option to go one way or the other? As in, go forward or not proceed? Where's our protection level around this particular document?
Mr Mayor, heads of agreement in different terms is really putting a ring fence around the bounds of what the negotiation will be. It's an expression of each other's intention, not so much commitment, but intention to attempt to draw up an agreeable lease. Once we get to lease, that then becomes legally enforceable. A heads of agreement, if it tends to do in poor faith, could probably give rise to an action from one party or the other who's been negotiating, not in good faith. But as long as the negotiation continues in good faith and the parties get to a point where they can't agree, then, I would have said we shake hands, we don't anymore. We walk away, both parties. Either party can walk away at any time.
Yep. And so further to that, just one more question. Oh, sorry.
As I'm saying, it does not specifically obligate us to any expenditure.
Okay. And so further to that, the next part of that question would be, if we wanted a little bit more tightening up in just the general intent, can we do that? Are there other amendments that we can put into this agreement of requesting further information as a protection against some of the risks that might be identified further down the track?
Yes, certainly. This heads of agreement is brought to council for approval, and if council wants to see it changed anyway, that's council's priority.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, councillor. Thanks to traffic to the aerodrome. What impacts that can have on our right to repair is required to the runway?
You could inform me to give you a precise answer to that question to you, Mr Mayor. But certainly, our runway at present is not being worn out by overuse. Our runway and all of the sealed surfaces at the aerodrome will die of age rather than wear and tear simply on the traffic on them. So the traffic that would be provided, would be present because of a flight school would be very light traffic. So Cessna, I think they call 172s, quite light aircraft. There are much heavier aircraft currently using the aerodrome on a daily basis. I wouldn't say that it would be measurable, the impact of even very heavy flight school traffic.
All right. And in the report, I haven't gone on any implications. You talk about noise and traffic within the airport environment. They're on existing planning controls. So what are those existing planning controls?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The Swan Hill planning scheme has an airport environment overlay. That overlay seeks to protect the aerodrome site for users in aerodrome. It doesn't seek to prevent or to protect those who live around the aerodrome. It's a statement saying there is an aerodrome there and those in the environment should expect noise and aircraft traffic. It also seeks to prevent the obstacle or protect the obstacle limitation surface, would prevent construction of buildings or towers that would project into the airspace that aircraft would use. So it's a planning control that simply identifies properties surrounding the aerodrome for two or three kilometres, I think, Mr Mayor. That there's an airport there and that will have some restrictions on their development of airports.
Can we have any control over the curfew on the aerodrome? Or is that a casualty? And also the flight paths for those airplanes? Are they over our city or can we stop them coming out of us?
There is currently no curfews in place for the Swan Hill aerodrome. We could seek to apply curfews specifically to the training activities. We'd have to do that through the airport user agreement. So this heads of agreement proposes that we will negotiate an airport lease, so leasing a specific site on the airport with all of our improvements on that site, and also to then negotiate an airport user agreement, which will see council receive some recompense for the actual use of the aerodrome as well. It would be possible to put conditions in that airport user agreement about times of, certainly times of operation. It would be possible to put conditions in in relation to flight path. I can see some significant difficulties in enforcing that, but it would be possible.
All right. And just one last, in relation to the heads of agreement, you're saying, part of this, council will construct at its expense. Is there any possibility whereby if this does go through and the Alliance agree to come here and all this stuff, getting, reducing the lease and now giving them, put some money in upfront to build the facilities? Is that an option for us?
Mr Mayor, absolutely. That's really the thrust of the amendments that have been made since early March to this agreement. Concerns about the viability of aviation training, not just in Australia but worldwide. As we said the other day, we may be looking down the barrel of the collapse of our second domestic airline. There will be a flood of pilots in the international market, and we may see the stream of pilots for this school dry up quite rapidly. In any event, we're yet to predict when international travel will reopen and the pipeline of trainees, of cadets coming out of China to this facility is turned off right now. We're not sure when that will open either. So whilst earlier in the year, time was of the essence, the response to the COVID-19 virus has meant that we don't need to be in such a rush on this. We should consider all these matters carefully, and the intention is to go back to the proponents and seek some cash into the investment rather than council providing them. So sharing the risk.
So sharing the risk, as you said, Mr Seer, having this in the heads of agreement, the council will construct at its expense, doesn't leave the others to pass to them to say, what have you come on board for us?
No, absolutely not. And we have not detailed in the heads of agreement what it will be other than a building. We're trying to make sure that there is some significant skin in the game by Australian Aviation Alliance.
All right. Just one last question, Mr Seer. In relation to, obviously, we would have public liability to undertake the aerodrome. I see in the heads of agreement to talk about that, but where will their liability finish and our liability start in the aerodrome?
The heads of agreement suggest, and we will put this into user agreements, that we are responsible for the infrastructure that's publicly available at the aerodrome, and Australian Aviation Alliance, already other group for that matter, are responsible for the safety of their specific operations. So we have no liability for the maintenance and safety of their aircraft. That's their responsibility. The adequacy of their flight instructors, their responsibility. The pavement, the runway, the taxiways, et cetera, council's responsibility. So the liability sits with the party that is taking all the risk and providing the service. And we're providing an airport service, they provide a training school.
So basically, once the pilots are in the aeroplane, if they trip over the only two the aeroplane, it's theirs.
Once they're outside their lease area.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I've just got, I've got a little bit confused here about the legal ramifications. Did you say there will be no legal ramifications, many agreements or discussions within this heads of agreement?
Up to this point, with this heads of agreement, if council and the Australian Aviation Alliance continue to negotiate in good faith, there can be no legal ramifications. Once we move past that and sign our lease, then that is a legally enforceable instrument.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Given that the flight school in Mildura has been surrounded in controversy recently, this is probably more for public information than anything, and you may or may not be able to answer this. Is it the same flight school that is located currently in Mildura and utilizing the problem our level?
Most certainly it is. The people on the element are the same people. The flight school in Mildura was by AAA, International Aviation Alliance. International Aviation Alliance have a subsidiary company fully owned by themselves, known as Australian Aviation Alliance, which is the entity that we are now negotiating with. So it's the same people, it's the same money, it's the same outfit. It may be a slightly different name.
Yes, councillor Jeffrey, thank you. In regards to if we were to request with our lease with this company, we are, and we'd get there to put up the money to build whatever buildings, they'd just still be less, a type of building. They won't own any part of the airport, they won't own any buildings. It'll, if they leave, half of it for the lease or, at the end of the lease, they'll become council property, if they don't get any, it'll be council property. So that's it, my question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. When we started the discussions, the proposal was that council would lease a site to the airport school, to the flight school, but that we would provide the capital for the construction of the buildings and so council would retain ownership of everything. In trying to mitigate the risk, one of the ways of doing that will be that council continues to own the aerodrome and lease that site to them, but that some, if not all, of the capital for the construction of the building be provided by Australian Aviation Alliance. If we're able to negotiate that, then they will own the buildings. They'll own the land that they set up, and upon departure from the aerodrome, they would seek to either re-lease their buildings or they'll be demounted or remove them from site.
First question on the heads of agreement, which proposes nine lease, which under my local government act, I think it's 10, is going to be a consultation. Is there any reason why, no matter what length of a lease we've got, there's some form of community consultation around, if council tries to do that?
I understand the question, Mr Mayor. No, there's absolutely no, nothing to preclude us from taking any form of consultation, which regardless of the term of the lease, save to say that if it's in excess of 10 years, then we must go through a process under the 1989 Act, known as section 223, which is in the process of changing as we flip down to the new 2020 Act.
Thank you. Good, yes. No questions?
I'd like to move my motion.
Okay. I have a question. In terms of hours of operational curfews, these will all be in the agreement, which will come to council before you go back to them?
Yes.
So everything?
The lease and the terms of agreement will be returned to council once negotiated, before the council approve.
So it all comes back here before, yeah, so we've got to get our approval before it goes back. Yeah, okay. Right. No further questions? Councillor MacKay, your motion, push out your motion, please.
I'd like to move a motion that this report is laid on the table until council receives our report. Point one, free of errors.
Point of order, Mr Mayor. The motion is to lay it on the table. Once that motion is put, there's no discussion or debate about that. That is the motion to proceed. That's the local law one, that's it. There's no impact. There's no debate on, no, you are. A motion delayed, you can just move that.
But we haven't put the motion yet.
Yes, but, yeah. Motion is to lay it on the table.
The procedural motion is a little more extensive than that.
Is it?
Councillor MacKay has indicated that she's got quite an extensive motion, which is to lay it on the table with some conditions.
So would that not benefit us at all on our motion?
It's a normal motion.
Different motion. Not laying much, eh? You want to move a motion to follow and put the information compact.
So do you.
So it won't be.
I'll move a motion and not, that we ask for a report to be presented to council at the next meeting. Free of errors of detail. Listing flight paths to be utilized. Listing flight paths, sorry, flight paths to be utilized for flight training by AAA. PL. Flight times, sorry, I want to get this showing, utilized by AAA, AAA. Flight times required by the Australian Aviation Alliance Proprietary Limited Flight School, training 200 students in rotation. Training 200 students in rotation. And the second point. Employment in EFT generated by the Mildura Flight School is reported. Sorry. At, in EFT, generated by the Mildura Flight School. In AFT, generated by the Mildura Flight School. At this point in time. To be provided to council by NIDKender, verified source. Yes, it's not printed. Employment in AFT generated, is that's okay, generated?
By the Mildura Flight School?
Yeah.
At the present time and to be independently verified.
To be independently verified. Day, uh, by, sorry, independently A and T.
So can you check for your motion, because?
Let me just check. To, a report to be presented to the next council meeting. Do we need to add this one here, or I think that's inherent in the intent, employment in AFT generated, yes, thank you, prior to any heads of agreement being undertaken.
You need request after that council, that council request.
Oh, thank you.
And I'll get rid of four, the council requests a report, I mean your anti-council report.
Yes.
A report to be presented at the next meeting, free of errors of detail, listing flight paths to be utilized by AAA, flight times required by AAA, much training, training 100 students in rotation, and two, request employment in AFT generated, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be better if it said a report presented at the next meeting, not as number one, but with colons, and then the three, three requests after it. So Sharon, if you could request a report presented to be presented at the next meeting, and then one, free of errors, two, listing flight paths.
So Sharon, remove the colon?
So, yeah, one, free of errors, thank you, detail.
Two, listing flight paths?
Yes.
Now, sorry Sharon, up in number one. Free of errors of detail, full stop, two, listing flight paths. That's the stop point two. Listing flight paths to be utilized by AAA, much in rotation, and three. Detailing employment, list, listing, just listing.
Maybe for just correctness, the AAA at the top. Might have to say proprietary limited training. As is upon our report.
And in actual fact, flight time should be number three, I believe.
Yeah.
Listing, thanks.
Oh, I guess we're talking about the, yes, that's fine.
Do we have a second for this one? Would you like to speak?
Yes, I believe it's sensible before council perceives to a heads of agreement that we are finished with more information as to the detail of what a training school could look like in our region. There may be many positives and they've been spoken to us by the CEO and however, we do need to understand totally the impact on our community, our responsibilities to our ratepayers and residents, and at this point in time, it would be wise for us to understand where the flight paths are and what the lengths of time that the flights would be going for, days, nights, in order to make this flight training school viable. I believe this is sensible to request this and also so we can make cost benefit analysis for our community and actual details of the amount of employment generated by the Mildura Flight School, so that councillors can be, have a full understanding of the cost benefits to the community, and if there is a cost, if there is a benefit, they can weigh those up, but also that the community itself will be aware of that through the tabling of our report. I would also prefer community consultation to go on in the long run. I am concerned that in the report provided to council, the second report, the first having some errors, and I think that's totally understandable in the event that we've been dealing with a pandemic nonetheless, but nonetheless, still in this report, the ABN of the Australian Aviation Alliance is incorrect, and there is not quite enough detail there for me to feel confident to go forward, and so I think this information would save the effort of both parties. Our CEO did say that a heads of agreement could be perceived as being undertaken not in good faith and may have some legal implications, and so I believe to go forward in a strong way would be to have all of the information and all the implications available for us and the community. It's not to say a negative or a positive, but just that we need to understand what the implications are for our community and also the problems, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I understand the heads of agreement is an agreement to enter into further negotiations. However, given the controversy surrounding Mildura and the impact it's currently having on residents around the aerodrome in Rock and Vale, with flight times not having a curfew, there being little to no rules around night flying again, around flight altitudes etcetera, etcetera, and some of the concern that it is causing residents that live in and around the aerodrome, and also the fact that, as Mr McLendon said earlier, this is no longer time, as time critical as it was, and the aviation industry in Australia, in fact globally, is in a very precarious position. I think we've probably got time for this to go back and come back to council at a later time with all of these things being investigated a little further, I do think we need to tread carefully with this one. Thank you.
Can I move an amendment to the motion basis there? And that is that, this top point. This is our true scope for service, so. That impact on, comma, on, on, availability. On the provision of accommodation. Full stop.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Can I second it even though I seconded the original motion?
No, no, we cannot.
With the word of the move and the second, it could include in the initial motion.
It could.
Yes.
If it happened, that.
There it happened, yeah.
Okay. We'll do that then.
With the original motion.
Including that now becomes part of the original motion?
Sure, when is the right time, Mr Mayor, but before this is put, I just should put to council, this probably won't make the next meeting, there's a bit of work in this, I just do note at the top there, it says, present it at the next meeting, which you know, probably far before we start, we're making them in four weeks. There's a bit of research work in this.
Can I ask a question to the CEO, what are the reasons for time for I have to get this motion?
It's probably three months, I'm just not too sure how available some of this data and information will be, particularly around flight paths and the like, but I guess what this is, as a whole point, we don't move forward until we've brought that report back to council, so it'll be done as soon as possible.
Can I move another amendment? Perhaps the amendment would be acceptable to remove.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
At future meeting?
At the future meeting.
Understand that this is a whole point, nothing permisses until this report is brought back and dealt with.
Thank you. Are you happy with that? Change this to your original motion?
May I add another point?
You can't move an amendment. You can't, you can't, your amendment to our motion, that's all. You have those amendments, Councilman Jeffrey.
Well, they're, they're acceptable, I may run the second, this, I don't have any further say, activity, they're spied on them.
Now, do you speak?
He's still in the back.
Pardon? He's still in the back. Councilor Jeffrey, you want to?
No, I'll talk to him.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, the initial motion was the initial rule, this, Councilwoman Kay, she didn't speak much, okay?
Well, I'll, I'll, thank you. I'll reiterate that it's very important that we have all the information available to go forward, I think there's an extra layer of scrutiny upon our council to proceed doing the right thing by our municipality, and that's the intention of this, this motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kay. Second motion.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think, given that there's another councillor willing to make amendments to this motion, is a very good example of how far we can dig into this and how important it is to revisit this with, with the gift of time, so I think that's a really good example of why this motion should pass as is now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further speakers for the motion?
Respectfully, I wanted to add that last top point, this is the way the council has decided to go, is, there have been a number of questions put to me by community members around the impact, particularly of those as well, the flight times, what your employment would bring, and the impact on accommodation, and it's apparently given that it is pretty hard to go rental right now, each house is getting 20 people booked for it, you know, those before the handout, but, so if our own citizens at the moment, the people that are here living in a, working in a, working in a municipality are struggling to get accommodation, how is that going to be addressed, given if 250 people walk out tomorrow, or what's the less, if we go here with it, and what impact, what further impact will that have, and what can we do or will the community do to address that? So that's why I want to look at the opportunity that comes with this going forward, so if this is what we're going to go with, that's something important to make as well, not just for our benefit, but to help the citizens and the community. Thank you, Mr Jeffrey.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any, yes, Councilwoman.
I'd just like to speak to the motion, I think we need this information, I guess, to settle some of the concerns of the community, and I think the climate at the moment, it's advisable that we do have as much information as we can get, and the decision is delayed just a little bit longer. Any decisions are delayed a little bit longer.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
Yes.
Put the, yes, the motion.
Just going back to my initial question to about the intent of this document, it basically is a document of intent, I think if we clarify things like direction of flight paths and the timing of the use of this facility, we'll have our answer. I think sending our CEO out to do all this additional information may well be putting an unnecessary load on what is required to inform this document. If we can clearly show that it won't work, we don't need to go any further. If we can show that the flight paths aren't going to affect amenity of our neighborhoods, and that the times of use may or may not be suitable, we've got our answer, and my concern also is not bad and shallow already. I do understand that we have a lot of time with this, but so many times, we put these things off, we put them off, and then when the time comes around to actually act, we're not ready to do it. So from a document point of view, to me, the heads of agreement is just that, it's a, it's a, it's a message of intent, so if we can get some background information slotted into there, we still have the opportunity to say yes or no when that comes back to us. So this document's going no further than us and the general community in the short term, and I think there's enough conversation to be had around, around those initial points. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councilwoman. Yeah, Mr Mayor, I suppose we can give some motion as well. As Councilor Johnson, sorry, as Councilor Johnson said, this, the heads of agreement will answer a lot of those questions for us, about flight paths, about timing, as for listing employment generated by Mildura Flight School, that's very subjective, you can't measure some things in economic development, how many, like the food industry, the accommodation, etcetera, etcetera, the inflow, the impact to our economy, this is going to have a big impact to our economy. By putting this out and putting a time, I know we've got time to do this, but what it does is everything else councillors doing in our four-year major projects plan is putting that on hold as well, because they're focusing on this thing here. We need to get the answers quicker than just putting it off and putting it off, because unfortunately, in these, these times, the, these type of businesses come and go, they are looking at other areas now, they aren't looking at just our municipality. If we lose this opportunity, we always talk about economic development within our municipality, this is an opportunity for that economic development, and it's going to come at a cost to council, yes, but I don't believe we've covered enough in the, in the heads of agreement that whereby we can put it back on the flight school to invest more money in for their behalf, as the CEO said in his thing. And I personally take it as a councillor, the first top point, free of errors of detail, the next mistake I make on a report won't be the first, I think that's in front of the officers who are going to put in that recommendation, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Fee. Councilwoman Kay, would you like to close?
There is absolutely no offence meant by that, that I think this is an instrument of government, our, our organization, we, in such a serious type of agreement as this, we should have the correct information in front of us and also detailed information. We're making big decisions for our community, and there is, I would just like to reiterate, there is absolutely no insult intended at all, we have had a pandemic on our heads, so the council has been very preoccupied with that. I think that I am a firm believer in the community coming along with council and being informed, having a report to council is a way of increasing that community knowledge and acceptance, and if they can see the economic development and that it weighs up well against them, then we will be informed by that also. I don't see the risk, we do not have, have not in the past had a problem with employment in our region, we've got a thriving agricultural industry, of course, things have altered, but we do need to be very mindful of the potential impacts on amenity, housing, property prices, and just be aware of them and that they are integrated into our planning. With the change of the lease being to a three by three by three, I'm not sure that it has to go for public submission, and so that is another control that is gone out of this, the original report, so I just make my case that we are only trying to be careful, we are put in to represent the people and the ratepayers who voted for us, and that is my intention in putting forward this motion, and I ask the other councillors to support me. It is not a judgmental, judgmental. It is not a judgmental motion, it is just seeking further information so that we can make a decision in the fullness of time with all the information available to us that we need. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. We'll now go to all those in favor of the motion. Those against? The motion is lost. Now, go back to the original motion.
I'll move a motion, taken into account, the original recommended motion, as top point. Let's set up a point.
Do we have the... Go back to the original motion?
And adding, sorry, after the end of report, could take into consideration. Dot points two, three, four, five, over for lost page.
You would copy moving if that...
Does.
Yes.
As dot points, I'll just take it out for reading, I'll take out the steam in front of it.
Three as well. Listing three.
Actually, I could take out dot point four in place. I'll have it in there for this instead.
And Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, because I think I heard you say, first two lines and then attached to this report, taking into consideration. So rather than a new sentence, just taking into...
Satisfied that that is your motion, councillor Jeffrey?
Sorry.
Satisfied that that is your motion?
I'll have it there, thank you.
Yes, do I have a second for that motion? Oh, second answer, you're right. Thank you.
Respect, thank you, Mr. Mayor. By entering into a heads of agreement with the proposed flight school and their company, it is bringing forward to council a further consideration of our lease and how that lease would work, whether council less the land and the company builds a building, or the council builds a building, less the land and they build it back to the company, or perhaps by the end of the year, which I think it's December, to negotiate or before. It'll give us a bit more time to consider various, the pandemic that's happening at the moment. So today, I'd like a number of community members expressed to me concerns around dot points one, two and three. And I think if we can authorize the CEO to negotiate with Australian Aviation license alliance, the flight paths, the times required, and the impact on accommodation. I think the first two dot points in particular, we can control better through the heads of agreement. But the opportunities that exist, or potentially exist within the provision of accommodation, is something that we necessarily can't control more than company, but there will be opportunities for, versus an armament of the public to take advantage of and to help growth. So I'm happy with that as it's put, and I believe it takes into consideration the concerns of the community and councils in the town.
Thank you, councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, this sort of basically covers off from what's been discussed throughout this whole report, and takes into consideration the previously lost motion. It is about the flight paths, flight times. As to what control we have over them, that's a question of its own. Like CASA, the civil aviation, may have no limitations on it. I'm sure there are limitations where they can fly and what time they can fly. I'm certainly hopeful that any pilot that is trained and flies a plane anywhere in the world, and I happen to be flying on them at night time, they have the opportunity to fly at night time too. They've got to train at all times of the day, but we've got to do it with respect to the surrounding areas. And I think it's about getting that balance right. And because we all will be traveling on planes again, once this COVID finishes, we will get back in planes, we will travel again. The world is a small place, we need that sort of training. And we need our pilots to be trained in all conditions and at all times of day and night. But without affecting the community nearby to rotate and extend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor?
So just to clarify, when we talk about flight paths, we probably need to also mention the actual training grounds. My understanding is the MULJIRA, a lot of the comments around the MULJIRA issues, it's not so much the flight path, well, it is a flight path, but they're flying from the airport to the training area. So it's not just flight paths, it's the actual training area that's going to be used. So just to go back on, we need to clarify flight paths and training area, so they're two different things.
Any further amendment? I'll have it include that in if councillor McPhee is happy to include that.
So flight paths and training areas.
Training areas.
I'll have it include that, thank you, councillor.
Okay. All right, any further speakers for the motion? Has... Any further speakers for the... Any against the motion? Yes, councillor McKay?
I just think that this motion is unclear as to the CEO takes into account flight paths and training areas, flight times. But where is the obligation to report that back to anyone, or indeed the ratepayers or residents? Is there any, is that specified, or will it be detailed to in fact councillors? So this is my concern with this motion. The MULJIRA agreement as far as has been detailed did not have, the airport agreement with the flight school did not have any limitation on flights, which could occur at any time of the day and night, as far as I understand. You know, read in the media or noted somewhere, so I'm happy to be contradicted. I believe at this point, they're flowing between seven and 10 p.m. But to leave that up to CASA or leave it up to a later point, I'm just concerned that this motion doesn't make it specific enough. It certainly does take into account some considerations of councillors and the general community, but leaving it to the CEO to take into consideration is not specific. Can we ask for that information to be provided to us? Remaining in the room at Rumble, the executive, is my concern.
Thank you councillor McKay. Any further speakers against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey, would you like to close the debate?
No, quite happy with the discussion, that's okay.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Against? Passed six points. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item B 2023, 2020 Yamagata Exchange. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is as much as anything, an information report and also a spelling out the failed Yamagata exchange caused by the travel bans around COVID-19. And a request from the Swan Hill Yamagata Club asking if we continue to advocate for the student tour in 2021. So as I think everyone in the chamber is aware, Yamagata tour was unable to proceed this year because of travel restrictions put in place, not only in Australia, also Japan and much of the world in fact. There has been a great deal of fundraising and excitement built in the minds of the students that were to attend this exchange. And the request of the committee is that of the Japanese Yamagata Club, that the tour not be put off till 2022, which is the normal two-year cycle, but only postponed one year. If that's possible, then many of the students, not all, but many of the students will be able to participate next year. And these are the students that have already done the fundraising and the hard work. If it's pushed out to 2022, a number of them will be in year 12, or will, I think in a couple of cases, will have even left school and will be unable to attend. This proposal was put to the Yamagata organizers in Yamagata, and it was rejected at that point in time, as they were simply under siege by the impact of the coronavirus in their own country, which certainly predated what we were experiencing in Australia. So the Yamagata Club of Swan Hills' request to council is that we continue to monitor the situation, but to advocate, that's not quite right, I'll actually reword that, Mr. Mayor. Their request was very simple, that we continue to advocate with our connections in Yamagata for a 2021 tour. I'm suggesting that we should continue to monitor the COVID-19 situation. And if that lends itself to a request, then we should request.
Any questions councillors? Councillor McPhee?
If we do choose to go down this for Mr. CEO, what impact is it going to have on the 2022 tour?
At this point in time, the 2022 tour hasn't commenced or been planned. The club will then make a decision whether they go to a 2022 or 2023 tour. There will need to be some knock-on effect, and there'll need to be discussion with the Japanese contingent as well. These things are the work of both countries, or both clubs of the industry.
Just going off to that, as I said, it's disappointing for the young, but ready made forward. The money they've raised will be given back to them, so the families are not going to be out of money. That money they've raised will go back to them for the money they've lost in airfares and all that.
Almost entirely, I think they've all done their $200 deposit. Short of that, and some may be out of pocket for travel insurance, but that's a decision that each family made individually. All other funds will be returned, so that's correct.
Yep. And the repercussions from that, as you say, may be due, because there is a lot of money involved in this much year. I know Yamagata has five sister city relationships, not just one, not only yet. What impact is that going to have on their five sister city relationships? That may be some of the cause why they're not going ahead. And also, a follow-up question from that, if we do happen to get to go to 21, then 23, 24, all of a sudden, this relationship's been going for 40 odd years now. When it gets towards 50th year, we're going to have to go back in a year or so. So there's, I can see difficulties in the traffic up here. But do we know what impact it's having on the other five sister city relationships? And maybe they're reasoning why they've knocked us back?
No, we don't. We don't have the reasons for it. I would just give an emphatic no 2022 answer.
Any further questions councillors? They may not, can I have a move please? Yeah, move councillor McKay, a second now? Did we have a second now? Councillor Johnson? Any further speakers for the motion?
Nothing, just sounds like sensible management to continue to monitor the situation and advocate for student tours in Yamagata if appropriate. That's the best that the council can do. It's been a wonderful program, promoting good international understanding.
Thank you, councillor Johnson?
Yeah, absolutely. And so we've got from the direction of what we can and can't do, then monitoring is about all we can do.
Thank you. Further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion?
Oh, against. Because there are certain cities, like Yamagata, and the mayors express their unfortunate situation we're in and that they aren't able to facilitate it. We should be respectful of that sister city relationship and not press them to allow us to continue the celebration. It'd be a fair bit keen by their city and by their, yeah, by their city to accept Yamagata's year that's coming. And out of year and out of plans, I think we need to be respectful of the position we're in and the unfortunate circumstances and just acknowledge that unfortunately, they can't, the city, at 2021, it's a bit.
Thank you, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, I'll speak against the motion, Mr. Mayor. But actually, when I'm here, the Japanese people and lovely people, they are very respectful of the sister city relationships, as I said, they have five. We don't know what impact it's having on those other ones. There's no clear guidelines of this, we're acting about the flying next year anyway. So the planning's going to be all out of whack. I believe it's unfortunate for the children that missed out this year, but there's a lot of things right throughout this world, people have missed out on this year because of this disease that's trained worldwide. I think it's not appropriate for us to push our view, when they have four other cities involved as well, what they're thinking next, say no to us. I think just respect their view and unfortunately say, sorry, we'll do it again in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further speakers for or against councillor McKay, who's got to close the debate?
I've nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, we'll go to a vote. Those for the motion? Those against the motion? Five. One, two, lost, lost, the motion's lost.
I'll just move the motion in relation to that report, Mr. Mayor. I think the council write to the Swan Hill Yamagata Club, informing that we will not be advocating for the student tour in 2021. And apologies to all those students that were affected. The council?
Write to the Swan Hill Yamagata Club.
Swan Hill Yamagata Club, informing them, council will not advocate for a student exchange in 2021. And send our apologies to the children club. Students, oh, it's not, it's not that. Is that right?
Thank you. All right. That's it then? Any other second?
Oh, second.
Second, councillor Jeffrey? Just to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, as I said before, Mr. Mayor, look, the Japanese people are lovely people. I don't know where they have five sister city relationships. We're not in a position to know what effect this has on those other relationships they have. It is unfortunate for our children to miss out, but I think it's more important to keep this relationship going into the future, rather than push for one year out. The world is a different place to what it was a number of months ago because of COVID-19. And unfortunately, a lot of people all around the world, as I said before, have missed out on things as a result of this. And we're not going to know whether it's, when it's going to end, and whether they're going to have time next year to do it. So I think it's best to just say, sorry kids, or sorry students for missing out on this year, but the opportunity will be again in 2022 for a new, local students to attend. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
No, I was prepared, but I've got a second, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any speakers against the motion? Any further speakers for the motion? Councillor McPhee, would you like to close?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Passed unanimously. Section C.
I'll move the recommendations.
Council Assembly's Report of Attentions to the Gerais Products, the council notes the contents of this report, do I have a second now? Councillor Bennett?
The serial.
Serial. Flag and father. Yes. Those against, passed unanimously. Council Assembly's Report of Attentions to the General Act, item C 20.5. Six is sign and seal report.
Mr. Mayor, use of the seal on three occasions on section 173 agreements and a lease. Just asking the council all those, to note the use of the seal.
Oh, the recommendations.
First, councillor Jeffrey, has put recommendations, or the second, councillor Johnson, would you speak to the motions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers, all those in favor? Passed unanimously. This is up motion. Councillor McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move a motion that in council rights, the federal health minister, the honourable Greg Hunt, and the Victorian health minister, the honourable Jenny McCarthos, to communicate, one, our support and willingness to participate in any program that would provide accommodation for COVID-19 positive individuals to be isolated in quarantine, accommodation to prevent spread within the community. Two, the need to facilitate increased outreach and screening for COVID-19 vulnerable and hard-to-reach groups and to agricultural workers who have moved between regions for work in order to protect first and foremost their health, the well-being of the agricultural workers. in order to protect first and foremost their health, the wellbeing of the agricultural workers force and the general community. And three, funding to, wait, I should amend it to say request funding but provided to support both these public health, important public health strategies. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Oh, sir, yes, second, Counselor Bailey. Just to speak to the motion, Counselor McCaughan.
Sure, I'll read partly from my preamble. Control of Covid-19 virus is essential to the wellbeing and economy of our community. It is in our interest to support the recovery of Covid-19 positive individuals and do everything to reduce transmission to their family, housemates and general community by assisting them to maintain quarantine. The Australian Government is considering establishing of many hotels to enable Covid-19 positive and those experiencing mild symptoms to recover in quarantine. The article, I've put a reference to an article below, explaining its conclusion that transmission of the virus is highly likely in for the millennial groups due to impracticality of utilizing PPE, personal protective equipment and infection control skills. Thailand, Singapore, Hong Kong and China's success in limiting growth of the Covid-19 has depended on testing, contact tracing and careful government-funded accommodation of cases to ensure quarantine. It appears that social distancing and stage three restrictions have had a positive impact in limiting spread in Australia. It is now essential that we work together with astidious care to bed down these gains by ensuring that community transmission is disabled. We will do this by respecting human rights whilst emphasizing responsibility for protecting of the common good. We will work to ensure there is no stigma attached to a positive diagnosis and continue Australia's long tradition of successful public health campaigns. Um, as a background discussion, I would add, we're all aware through our rural cities population study and statistics of health service use that our area has a large migrant worker population. Um, it's been a major contributor to the success of our labour-intensive porticulture industry. Swanwood District Health and the rural city have worked very practically to communicate and source health information in other languages other than English. However, we can do better. The last thing that we would like to become is a potential hotspot for any Covid-19 outbreak. In other countries such as Singapore, it's well documented where they suppress the virus very well. There have been flare-ups in relation to migrant workforce communities where work, living conditions are, well, increased risk of transmission. For these reasons, it is essential that our governments are aware of these populations and provide all possible assistance so that Covid-19 testing and management strategies be available to their fullest extent to maximise the health of the community. I'm not suggesting forced quarantine, but that we just have available places that can limit spread, that could be used in our community, and we advocate this for this need. This is something that has been provided in the city to people travelling into the country from overseas. And it's important that we don't become complacent about this virus, given we've had initial positive outcomes. However, we need to make sure that they continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McFay?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate the federal MP and come to a lady in hand in this situation. We have been very lucky in Australia, possibly the fact that we are on the, the Covid hasn't got to eat the statistics you see overseas, which is overwhelming at times when you see those numbers, those people. And these aren't numbers, they are people who are dying. Um, we need to keep doing our social distancing, which we have been doing very well, and continue that into the future. Obviously, the world's going to be a different place when we come out the other end of this Covid-19 um, virus pandemic. And I think maybe for a better, better place too, as a result of that. But the fact that the Australian Government is considering establishing those many hotels, it is a great opportunity for our accommodation facilities up here who are hurting, along with our tourism and restaurants. They're the ones that are hurting most. We are very lucky in the fact that we've got agriculture up here. They're still going, but we need to protect them to make sure that the workers in those areas aren't spreading the disease amongst them. Because we're not only providing food for our area, but for the whole of Australia. We are the food hole of Australia in this region. So it's important to keep them going along. It's an opportunity to provide not only for the, those that are affected by Covid, they can't isolate at home, they're possibly transmitted in the house themselves, makes it very difficult. And it provides an income for those motels if they choose to take on. I think it's an opportunity that we, we shouldn't miss that go because, just because we're in the country, we should allow those. And it's a great act, can I please call those motels and hoteliers that are losing a lot of money? And we certainly hope we can get through this quickly. And I thank Nicole for presenting this motion up and making us aware that this is an opportunity for us to put some business back into real. Businesses aren't running so well at the moment. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Counselor McFay. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes?
Am I able to request one short amendment?
Of course. Most you can.
We just talked to Swan Hill District Health, if we could also put in there Robben Bar District Health Service, who have also been doing their part in getting multiple language communications out to the community.
Very true.
Are you happy with that?
Very much.
Sorry, to be added to your motion. Okay. Can you add that, let's see, in the motion?
In paragraph four, in background discussion point two.
Yes, in your actually, okay.
Yep. District Health Services.
This is our district health. You got the, Counselor, any breath?
Of course.
All right, any further speakers for the motion?
Um, I just wanted to put forward just an amendment to the wording within those motions. Is that possible?